Okay, let me call to order the May 8, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Would you kindly rise for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge to the flag? Gus, could you swing the camera around so we can show everybody at home what they missed by not coming out tonight?
(laughing) Right.
This may have exceeded our attendance record.
Take the picture.
Okay, first, we do have a presentation, a proclamation honoring William C. Hunter on your hundred and... Herter, on your 102nd birthday.
Woo-hoo! Woo-hoo! Wow!
I'll give you your bag of goodies in a second, but I would like to present this to you. Can you hear me? No, I'm killing you. You have to make the press happy, so if you want to just smile over there.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Before I present this to you, here, would you like to...
I'll shut it.
All right. On with the important stuff, Frank.
Right.
So, Mr. Herter, the Borough of Pottstown is honored to present a proclamation to you on your 102nd birthday. Whereas William C. Herter was born on May 8, 1917, to Otto and Anita Herter of Royersburg, Pennsylvania, and whereas Bill was raised and lived most of his adult life in the Borough of Pottstown. And he honorably served in the United States Navy on the USS Franklin during World War II. And Bill and his wife Dorothy celebrated 79 years of marriage along with four daughters, Gail, Bonnie, Lynn, and Karen, six grandchildren, 15 great-grandchildren, and two step-great-grandchildren. And Bill started his own business, The Herter's Meats and Provisions, in 1952 on Washington Street in Pottstown, Pennsylvania, which still exists today as Herter's Food Distributors at 398 Circle of Progress. Now therefore be it resolved that the Borough of Pottstown joins William C. Herter and his family in celebrating his 102nd birthday.
(applause) Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday dear Mr. Herter. Happy Birthday to you.
Yay! Thank you very much. And we have some Pottstown swag for you. We have a "We Are Pottstown" t-shirt. We have a nice polo shirt for you, and I believe a mug in there, so.
How do we use that?
There you go.
There is a fringe benefit to getting to 102, I guess.
(laughing) Right?
Hi, honey. How are you?
Happy Birthday.
How are you?
Are you three?
You're three? He's the nicest of nine in my years. Who are you? It's close. I'm not a good driver, very much. Uncle Bill!
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Happy Birthday, Mr. Herter.
Happy Birthday!
Here's to 102 more.
Yes. I want to be like him when I grow up.
Sure. All right, so apparently I'm just going to continue running the meeting tonight because it's just the Stephanie Show? Yep, no? All right, we have the employee recognition. I've issued a proclamation. It is Public Service Recognition Week in honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and local levels. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and local levels, and these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths, and many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, and scientists, trained conductors, and astronauts, nurses, and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. Without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I do hereby announce, proclaim to all citizens, that May 5 through the 11th of 2019 is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and local.
And one more. Steve Dean, we have the pleasure of having a presentation for the Pottstown Police Officer of the Year. Chief?
Okay.
Award. I am not going to read this lovely combination, but I'm going to hand this to you and make some remarks. Once again, you were a standout officer in 2018. You received numerous department commendations for your efforts and achievements. Officer Laquinto is hardworking and dedicated. He's always willing to come in on his day off. He always answers his personal cellphone when called upon to answer questions or assist investigations. He's a team player, and he's always willing to drop what he's doing to assist others. Officer Laquinto understands the issues that need to be addressed in the borough, including being very familiar with many of those involved in drug trafficking and violent offenses. He has been consulted many times during investigations of drug violations and major crimes. This is due to his familiarity of the criminal element in Pottstown, along with the knowledge of their associates. Officer Laquinto makes many proactive arrests. He also takes the time to interact with citizens on a positive level, including playing and joking with children. He's a model of community policing. He's able to do investigations with little or no assistance. He is well-versed in typing search warrants and conducting cellphone analysis, and he's an asset to the Pottstown Police Department. He performs at a standard that could be a model for younger officers to emulate. Officer Laquinto's integrity, credibility, hard work, and dedication make him worthy of Police Officer of the Year for 2018. So if you would join me in congratulating Officer Laquinto. (applause) And I would also like to personally thank you. You probably don't remember, but on Christmas Eve of 2013, you responded to a very bad car accident that I was involved in, and that was probably one of the scariest moments of my life, having to get cut out of that car. And you held my hand and made it okay, and I feel bad because you had to stay afterwards and assist cleaning out my car and thought maybe I was moving, but no, I just had a random bread maker and a saddle in my car, so it helped. And so I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. (applause)
in the action, if you will, earlier tonight. We did have an executive session, and at this time I'll turn it over to our solicitor to give you the explanation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sunshine Law requires that council announces executive session when it's not scheduled in advance at 6:45 this evening. Council met an executive session to discuss a matter of litigation. No decisions or action were taken. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. First would be infrastructure. Can anyone fill in for Vice President Kulp, or we'll hear from her on Monday? Okay. Second is economic business and economic development and business. Ms. Lee Clark?
So, Ms. Lee Clark is not available tonight, but she will be here on Monday to provide her report.
Okay. And transportation, we'll wait till Monday for Vice President Kulp on that. The ad hoc zoning, Council, Prosser.
No meeting.
No meeting. And financial sustainability, Counselor Kirkland?
Uh, I have no information.
Okay. Efficient Methods Committee, Counselor Lebedinsky?
Yeah, this is a new committee that we recently formed to study, establish, and improve communication goals, feedback and milestones for specific departments in the borough. It's going to be a way to set universal standards from department to department, top-to-bottom evaluation of tasks. We started with LNI, and it's going to be a repeat from last month because we have our meeting on Monday. But we were basically searching for ways to... for waste and improve the processes and standards that we currently have, and since many of the procedures are governed by ordinances, we have to review each one of them as we encounter it. So what we did was we challenged LNI to begin looking at their documentation, and one of the first major steps that we saw was the commercial mixed-use buildings checklist they created from seven different documents, and that gives us a step-by-step and a very transparent way of trends, giving information to the customer and also an expectation of how they're going to respond and how much time they need to respond, so people are understanding of what their schedule will be. We have it right here. It will be... It's available now, I believe, right, Keith? It's available now. It includes your plan review and the timing, your permitting in time, and inspection. It has... It's very clear. It's very transparent. So what we're doing is we're also listening to concerns from both old and new businesses, and we are also working on how to improve our response times and getting in time and getting back to anybody who's calling and asking questions. So moving forward, what we're doing is we're challenging our LNI department to create a better department, create a better way of working, so that it makes it a little easier, and then we'll also be able to move into other departments and try and do the same thing, basically just to try and refine our ways of working.
Very good. Thank you. Emergency Services. Anyone? Okay. Human Relations, Ms. Levin Good. Evening.
I'm just around a little bit. I'm speaking, Counselors, Council President, Y'all Mayor. Just a couple things about this month. This Sunday, May 12, is Mother's Day, a day to recognize mothers, motherhood, and maternal bonds in general. And also Monday, May 27, is Memorial Day. It's a day of remembering and honoring persons who have died while serving the United States on courses. The Commission has a vacancy. Anyone who's interested in applying, you can email your expression of interest and resume to HRC@Pottstown.org. And the next Commission's meeting is scheduled... is going to be held on Tuesday, May 14, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. We anticipate a presentation about Sikhism, which is the world's fifth-largest organized religion, by the Sikhs at Hill. There's students from Hillsborough who make a presentation on religions, and all are welcome to attend.
Thank you. C and D, Land Bank, as well as the Library, we reported on by Deb Penrod, who's not here. We'll ask her to show up Monday evening. He is Olivet Boys and Girls Club. Anything, Counselor Kirkland?
Nothing new at this time. The last report by the Director, Nick Philippidas, is still in effect.
Okay. Pottstown School District, Counselor Lindsey?
Okay, I was at the... I didn't attend the school district meeting because I was at the Borough Association meeting, dinner thing that we had, but I was told that the bullying rally prior to the meeting didn't happen because of the rain, so, I mean, that's all I have. Oh, and there was... Raymond, are you there? Are you out here? Okay. There was the first woman of color to get to graduate from Pottstown to get a law degree. Am I right? Something like that?
Yeah, she's in the Hall of... The Alumni Hall of Fame, is that who you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
So they have... The Pottstown School District does the Alumni Hall of Fame every year, and she was one of the nominees, which I believe we voted on at this meeting at our upcoming school year.
Okay. Yep, and that's what happened.
Okay. Mayor's report.
Okay. I'm still writing. It's a lot. All right. It's May. Can you believe it? So, this month... Last month. We're in May. April was pretty busy. We had... I attended two out of three community meetings that were led by Hannah Davis and David Charles that were well-attended. We had Rock the Block, which I heard was a fabulous turnout, and if I may, ask Ryan to talk a little bit about that, since I was unable to attend.
Well, it was a little chilly last year, but the weather was... Actually, it was too warm. I spent most of the day building a... rebuilding a handicap ramp for a woman on Beet Street with our assistant district attorneys. We've got, you know, Richard Bradbury. There are actually two Richard Bradburys, who brought a son with them, too, and then Lauren and Evan, so it went well.
Nice. I did have a PCA meeting last Monday, and... Yep, PCA meeting last Monday, which was this week, sorry. Wow, it's been a crazy week already. And any... Just to inform any of the residents who had projects that didn't get completed due to the rain or anything else, we are going to have extra supplies, and there will be members from PCA and Habitat coming out to finish those projects. They're also going to be working on fixing the pavers around the park, and I'm trying to get them to partner with PCTV so we can make it into a... like a DIY learning opportunity so that people can learn how to fix pavers on their property, and Habitat will be fixing the park. We also had Bowling for a Cause. We had the Climate March, the Eco-Fest. I spoke for Bark for Life, which I want to thank Trinita for being there for me at Bark for Life. That's always a difficult event for me to attend, and thank you for being there and holding my hand. It's near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate it. We also had the installation of the Tessellations on the River Trail. And the reason I'm having trouble remembering what we did is because I think we fit 35 events in that weekend as well as last weekend. And I'm mentioning this because there's a lot of events in Pottstown all the time, and it is humanly impossible to attend all of them in one day. So what I propose is that, for instance, for the Bark for Life, that was at Memorial Park. The Eco-Fest was at Smith Plaza. Now, I understand we couldn't move the Tessellation, but Bark for Life is happy to share Memorial Park. If we can have events all kind of in the same area, then people can attend all of the events that day, and I think it would be beneficial to the events and the community. So maybe we'll start this year doing a sign-up sheet, not preventing people from having multiple events in some... the same day, but so that people can see who's having an event, where they're having it, and if they have a similar event, they can try to hold it in the same area. We also... I wanted to thank Chief Markovich and ADA Bradbury and the Pottstown Police Department for organizing and holding the community meeting we had last week. We also had a dedication of a section of Route 100 to Newstel Maribel Senior. We presented that with some of the legislators. It is now renamed the Newstel Maribel Senior Highway, correct? And his wife Millicent and...
Bridge.
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 Bridge. Newstel Maribel Senior Bridge. His wife Millicent and family were in attendance, so it was a very nice dedication. We had May Day the same day. Can anyone tell me if we had the GOAT races? Because this is the first year that I did not attend.
Yes.
Because there were so many things. I was run ragged. How was it? Who won? Do we have a name for the winner?
Princess Jenny.
Princess Jenny won last year.
Mary.
Won again?
Yep.
All right. And we had the two-day pow-wow, and that was April and a little bit of May.
Usually we hear the drums on my way.
Pow-wow is this weekend?
Oh, is it?
Was it?
No. Pow-wow was last weekend, yeah. So, to keep this short, I will post the rest of what's going on in May on my Facebook page. Personally, I just want to let everyone know, not to worry you or anything, but I am having surgery this month, and I will be out for about two weeks. Not to say that I am not going to be checking emails, but I will most likely not be at events, and I may not be able to walk in the Memorial Day Parade. So just to let you know, I'm around, but I'm going to be a little MIA for a couple weeks, so Trinita may have to step in.
I'm already in the Memorial Day Parade, but I have no problem wearing your sash for May.
My sash? My top hat?
I have no problem.
All right.
I'll get it for you.
So, I may have to deputize you as my stand-in, and that is it for me for now.
You're good. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I lied. I'm so sorry. It's also... It's a crazy month, I'm sorry. It is also the General Aviation Appreciation Month. I am issuing a proclamation to proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the Borough of Pottstown and declare May 2019 as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the Borough of Pottstown. And now I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. And follow that one.
It's always a tough act to follow. Yeah, I'm just glad I'm not after Trinita, because it'd be even worse. So I'd like to welcome the newest member to our borough team, Frank Hand. If you could please stand up, is our new fire chief and fire marshal. We're very happy to have you here, Frank, and Mr. Hand comes from Lower Marion, where he served as a deputy fire marshal, as he honed his knowledge and skills in code enforcement, investigation, fire suppression, policy development, and budget administration. Mr. Hand is no stranger to hard work. He's comfortable wearing many hats, and will undoubtedly do that here at the borough. His career started with a solid foundation, coming up through the volunteer ranks, which will serve him well in our volunteer-led department. So please join me in welcoming Chief Hand to our borough family, and I don't know if... not to put you on the spot, but if you want to say a few words, you're welcome to.
It's been a great start. Staff and everyone's really worked well with me to get me where I need to be, and, you know, my family are not used to seeing me leave this early in the morning to come to work, but it's been good, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone on council and staff. Thank you.
An update on the Kyne Street Bridge, everyone's favorite topic. The engineering consultants for the Kyne Street Bridge, which is owned by Montgomery County and Chester Counties, will host a public workshop for the bridge on May 22 at 4:30 PM. Will be a public officials meeting, and then that will be followed from 6:00 to 8:00 PM by the... An open house for the general public where you can get your questions answered.
I think it's at the Collins.
I believe it is at the Community College in their general meeting room down there, so look for that on that night. And other updates, the closed loop is progressing well. Many of you have probably seen the streetlight poles that were installed on Hanover Street. That is a part of the closed loop, as well as the reconfiguration of the lanes that had to be done to accommodate the new traffic signals. We're still waiting on Norfolk Southern to... so that the fiber optic cable can be run underneath their railroad locations. That can't be done by PennDOT until Norfolk Southern frees their staff up to do the work, and at which point, once that's done, the signals will all be properly timed and will speak to one another, so we should have... speak to one another, so we should have more continuous greens along the main arteries in the Borough. And it's kind of a similar situation as well at the Coldbrookdale Railroad Crossing on Route 100, where that was a late addition to the project. Basically, the whole closed-loop system is predicated off of the railroad crossing, so when a train comes through, it will reconfigure the cycle for all of the red lights in the Borough. So, that was added in at the end, so we're waiting on the design to come in before we can get the controller boxes manufactured for that location as well. An update on the underground stormwater arches, so you'll see later tonight that we'll be requesting a resolution for a flood mitigation grant to address the failing stormwater arches. And, we're also working closely with Representatives Sarisi and Hennessy to get emergency appropriations funding in this year's state budget that will allow for engineering work to be completed for some of our sections that have collapsed and are in need of repairs. And then, we're also actively lobbying the governor through our state representatives to ensure that the new Restore PA funding stream proposed by the governor would allow for repair of stormwater arches on private property. So, we're hopeful that we'll get a favorable consideration under that new program. And then I just wanted to take a moment to update everyone on the new parking areas and the use of Park Mobile in the downtown, in the Borough. So, we did, oh, there it goes. So, we pulled up a map here, this map is also available on our website, and just to kind of take a step back, this, this whole parking idea was basically put together through a committee of business owners in the downtown. And, we've moved forward with instituting three-hour paid parking along High Street on both sides between Manitani and Madison Street, and that's shown in the purple line on the map. The payment option, the only payment option there is through Park Mobile, which can be accessed through a web-based application, or you can dial the number on your phone to pay for a parking spot in that location. And, the good thing about Park Mobile, I'll show you a little video, a little tutorial on how to download it and how to better utilize the system, but the good thing is that it will tell you when you are running out of time so that you can refresh your time. And also, everyone should please be aware that the first hour on High Street is free. However, you do have to register with the app in order to get the first hour of free parking on High Street. So, it takes a couple minutes to set up, and we do have a three-hour limit on High Street, there always has been a three-hour limit, we have maintained that. However, based on some initial feedback that we got from our residents who wanted to attend a show and dinner, we felt that that wasn't just, that wasn't quite enough time in the evenings, so we have lifted that three-hour maximum time limit from 5:00 PM on every day. So you can now park on High Street from 5:00 PM on and, you know, keep feeding the meter for the extent of your stay. The, the areas shown in blue on the map are our public parking lots, so you might have seen some new signs going up. There will be more signs going up to identify the public parking areas. In these lots, for people that don't want to pay using the Park Mobile application or calling the Park Mobile number, the kiosks or the honor boxes are still available in those lots for, for use. And then there's also, we've created a new parking lot, which is essentially, all the spaces fronting Smith Family Plaza, and this is from 6:00 PM on Friday until Sunday evening. You would be able to pay, you park with, Park Mobile in that location as well. So, we're gonna continue to evaluate this, and we're scheduling another meeting with the Parking Committee, I believe at the beginning of June. And, at this point, I just want to show a really quick, one-minute video tutorial on Park Mobile. So, we will, we also will be posting this video along with some other information to a web page on the Borough's website, so look for that to come up soon. We are posting updates real-time on social media, so follow us there if you have, if you have any questions. And, I've also invited Evan to do an article as well, for those that might not use the Internet. Again, just want to reiterate, this is kind of a soft opening at this point. There is gonna be a grace period until everyone can get used to the app. We are kind of going to be flexible to let everyone become accustomed to using it. But we do encourage you to sign up and try it out.
Justin, how long is the grace period?
We've not determined how long, but I think it'll be at least for the next several weeks.
And is, do you know, is it, if you park, you get the first hour free, but do you have to pay for an hour to get an hour free?
No, you don't have to pay for an hour to get an hour. All you have to do is register with Park Mobile and you get the first hour free. And there's no transaction charge or anything associated with that first hour. It's exactly what it is, free, it's really free.
Thanks.
And also, just want to show another really quick video here. If you recall, or I'm sorry, not a video, but photos, if you recall, when you guys, when council approved the art design on the School River Trail, you had asked to be updated on that, and, so, I just wanted to show you a couple photos of how it's turning out. They're almost completed with the mural at this point. I'm not sure when the last community effort will be to finish it up, but I think it looks pretty good so far. It features the School River Greenways logo, along with a lot of the flora and fauna that you would find in riverfront parks. So I think it was a pretty good community experience, and look forward to appreciating this piece of art for years to come.
Yes, it was nice, I was there, at nine o'clock in the morning, and the wind was brutal. But, it was like, everybody was there talking, and it was like, a big coloring book, and we were all like painting and stuff. And Joe Saruzi can't, he can't stand the lines, his fish was, I don't even know if it's a fish now, because he was painting and I don't even know what it was. But anyway, phew, but, yeah, it was Ken Lawrence and Val Acouch was there, it was a lot of people there. Carol was there, she came, so, it was nice. But it, yeah, it was nice, we had a good time.
All right. That concludes my report.
Very good. Now, we have the presentation of the Transit Development Plan.
Good evening. This is the Part Transit Development Plan. It is being funded by PennDOT. They were gracious enough to allow us to use Michael Baker, their consultant, and I'm going to turn it over to A.J. Nie, who has been working on the project for us.
As I mentioned, my name's A.J. Nie. I am a multiple transit planner of the Michael Baker International Office in Harrisburg. PennDOT brought me on board to work with the Borough of Pottstown, Pottstown Rapid Transit, the Transit Development Plan, and we're right at the tail end of it. So we've been working on this since November, and I just wanted to give an update on where we are and our recommendations. Just show you this quick timeline, so I said we've been working on this since November, and it's been a very long process, so I'm gonna take you through each step of the way really quickly, and then I'll pick up for questions at the end. We started with an analysis, I don't know. We started with an analysis of the current service, which I just have to say, we have been trying to develop the plans all over Pennsylvania and all over the country, and for the Borough of Pottstown to have a transit system that works this well to begin with is commendable. So we went into this really just working to try and up what you guys already have, not try and redesign because there's a serious problem we were dealing with. So we started by looking at all of the metrics, populations, demographics around each of the lines, just the stops, total populations, just so that we had a framework from where we started. And then we set a study area. We chatted up front on how big we wanted the study area to be. We talked about maybe including connections to Reading or further north out. We decided to limit to this far, as far west as Birdsboro, because that's where any transit connections to Barta in Reading would meet up. Barta buses come as far as Birdsboro. And then we looked north and south, all the way around. You can see here, the brown lines are the current service for Pottstown Rapid Transit. We came back in December and rode all the buses we spent a week here in the first few weeks of December, doing ride checks on all the stops, just kind of verifying data where people are riding, what transfers are happening. And we just, this is just a brief outline, we have a lot more data we're gonna show in a final report, but it really helped illuminate where the service was productive. It also gave us an opportunity to chat with bus riders on board, because we actually rode the buses all day for a week straight, including Saturday. I also did a transit propensity and potential ridership analysis. This is a really data-intensive process where we take all sorts of census data, longitudinal LEHD data, and combine it to show where potential ridership is. So, if, from this, we get a bunch of maps. Here's one, we call this access rates. This is just showing based on demographic indicators, including population densities and whatnot, where the highest percentages of potential riders are. So you can kind of see here, you know, it's centered in the Borough of Pottstown, you've got some stuff up near Boyer Town. Douglasville has a little population pocket, and then over in Limerick where you have the outlets. So it kind of makes sense with what you're seeing here. So we took all that data, oh, here's an origin and destination analysis, we looked at where people are traveling between, in all of the census block groups in the study area. So we, we took all of that just as, as a background before going into public outreach. And I just wanted to stress, one of the things I always am very serious about when I do a transit development plan is not coming in with any preconceived notions. So we let public outreach drive the plan, and so our public outreach process lasted all of January and February of this year. We did a number of, as I mentioned, onboard discussions with riders, who went out and did point contacts in the streets. We did a few public meetings at the Pottstown Library, which we advertised in shelters and at buses all over. And then we also had a MetroQuest online survey open all throughout the month of February, and reached out to operators as well, and we went to the PTICC meeting, discussed a bunch of, there was a focus with transportation this time. So, we got a bunch of feedback there through that process, and just a brief recap, you know, we got recommendations for bus shelters in certain places, service to Shoemaker Drive and the patient first, and Holly's out there, that's a tough spot. And then we also got some complaints about the transfer policy and how confusing it was, because there's two loop lines that go back and forth, so people trying to go home were technically transferring lines even though they were going the opposite direction. This is just a picture from our public meetings, some of the stuff we got back, more bus shelters. Access outside the Borough was important to people. We got requests for Suburbia Shopping Center down in North Coventry, up to Boyer Town in Gilbertsville, King of Prussia, of course, and more service to the premium outlets. More requests, of course, for Philly, Philadelphia, and Reading, and Stroller and Kid Friendly Access. So, what we took out of that is, with all of the public outreach we got, the, some of the most common things we got and things we wanted to fix were frequent connections to Gilbertsville, Suburbia, and North Coventry. People preferred classic transit over more contemporary concepts. Some places we go, people want, you know, Uber-like service, they want on-demand, door-to-door service. We look at that in some communities, but it seems like the people we spoke with here liked just having a dependable bus and a schedule that they can deal with. So we focused on streamlining that, and then, of course, fixing the confusing transfer issue with the loop lines. And then, we also wanted to make better use of the amenities that you have on the street, there's a lot of bus shelters that are very nice around, assets like that. So, as I mentioned, these were specific, we looked at service to Boyer Town. We also got a request for service up, there's a new housing development on Moya Road, service to Suburbia, connecting Rolling Hills and the shopping areas. We got a lot of requests for more direct service to the shopping areas, particularly Pottstown Center, the Walmart area, Upland Square, and to downtown Pottstown. So, it seems like there's a lot of drive for people to get out and go shopping or working at those jobs. So, from there, we did productivity testing on a number of routes. We looked at all of these areas to see whether or not it made any sense to run a bus there. You know, sometimes you get a request and you run some data on it, and you'd just be, you know, not getting, you did a couple riders on the bus, and it's not worth the money you're spending on that service. So, out of that process, we found that unfortunately, the connection to Suburbia didn't really work out productivity-wise, so we got requests for that, but the main driver for Suburbia was a giant grocery store out there, and we had connections to other giant grocery stores in the area on other routes. So, unfortunately, I, in this iteration of the plan, we're not going further south into Coventry. But, it seems like the Boyer Town route would really work, and we wanted to test out alternatives for Rolling Hills to connect people to shopping areas more quickly that way. So, here's, this is a look at all the data we ran for all the alternatives. Oh, and that's what I just said. Uh-oh. There we go. So, out of that, we came up with a bunch of alternatives for the daylines and the nightlines and the service. You can barely see them here, I can go into more detail if anybody would like later. But we looked at, we had a bunch of alternatives, and we limited it down to five different ones during the day and five at night. You can see the numbers aren't quite in order, because some of them that we thought were good just wouldn't work out from a timing perspective. You know, you want to run a bus somewhere, but you just can't fit it into the schedule. So we ended up with twenty-five different alternatives, including alternative zero on both day and night, which would be a no-go, you know, keep the service you have. And we ran all sorts of metrics on all these, and we came up with a preferred alternative, and this is where we're at today. So, the best thing, there's daylines and nightlines, and if you're familiar with the service, it's currently, the service changes at about 5:00 or 6:00 PM. Some of the routes alter where they're driving between the day and the night, just to hit more points and make sure people still have service at night. One of the great things about this new preferred alternative is the daylines and nightlines are the same. It's just that there's five lines during the day, and at night there's three lines. So, the two lines that disappear, they just disappear, and the three lines that are left are the same service that's happening during the day, so people won't get confused about where they're going. where they're going. We removed the loop line service, and I don't know how well you can see, but service from the Rolling Hills area now next to Coventry Mall, and meets up with all the other lines at the transfer center right across the street here, so we really wanted to use those assets. We modified the route going through Stowe to serve Upland Square all day, every day. So right now, you have to come all the way downtown and transfer to get to Upland Square from Stowe. Now, every bus goes there. And then a new addition is the orange line service up to Boyer Town, and it serves Gilbertsville and Boyer Town going up 100, stopping at both of the shopping complexes as well, Pottstown Center and Upland Square. And it also makes a stop on Shoemaker Drive to serve the patient first, and Holly's there. And that serves the need of people who want to get to those shopping, to and from those shopping areas more quickly. That service to Boyer Town would only run once every two hours, because it's further away. All the rest of the routes are running on an hour headway, so once an hour, back and forth each direction, so you have a little more service there. So what comes out of it is, you already had a great system, and we're keeping all of the service areas active. I don't think there's anywhere that lost service, except right in Stowe. We realigned this green line to serve the top part of the hill and better serve West Pottsville, because the area that is currently served by the line is literally two blocks from the line, so. But other than that, everywhere keeps service, and we have new service up to Moyer Road and Boyer Town for the same budget. You know, you're running the same number of buses, just streamlining the service a little more to hit more places. And that's where we're at. So that's the end. If we have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
How many people in Radisson, like, the crossroad? How many people in the bus? Like, not during the morning?
Per day? So like the hospital, we ran per trip productivity measures. I don't know if I can go back, but I think the hospital, we had about three people going to the medical center per trip, and I believe there are upwards of 30 trips a day. So we've got quite a few people going to the medical center. And I have to add that, that's also an important transfer point between the High Street Line and currently the south and east end loop lines, so some of those might be transferred. One of the things we are noticing is there is less of an emphasis on service to medical facilities, partially because a lot of medical facilities, not the hospital, but some of the smaller providers are providing their shuttle services. So that, that is, that's happening everywhere, and we're seeing less and less of a demand for service to medical facilities through fixed traffic transit.
So with these root changes, is, do you think that this will improve our ridership numbers? Is that, is that like the goal too, as well as improving the efficiencies?
Yes, that's, that's the goal. Well, I mean, we're running the same amount of service, the same service hours, the same number of buses, so, you know, if you're increasing productivity, that number is only because of increased ridership. So that's the goal here, to hit more people and to serve more spots, increasing ridership. Yeah. Any other questions? All right, we're wrapping this process up in the next couple of weeks, so if you do have any questions, let me know right away, or any concerns about this, because we'll be submitting this to PennDOT in two weeks, so thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Actually, I do have a question for you. So how does it impact the funding as far as, is so, is, are we going into Berks County now?
So one, I think, we left it open. We remained agnostic to which, how much of each county we were serving going into it. And what we came up with was, we are not going into Berks County. The Boyer Town route actually goes right up the county line route, forward to Boyer Town. So there's, when you get off 100 there, it takes a right on, I think, the county line road or something, and stays within the county. So there's, there's no new service to Berks County, but you will get ridership from Boyer Town, because it's so close to the border. Coventry, I don't think it'll change much. We actually... So in Coventry, the orange line is serving what is currently the Stowe line, which is our headways, and the orange line is to our headways, so you're getting slightly fewer trips to county center than department. But the purple line, or whatever it's going to be called, serves Coventry Mall on our headway. So the service hours to Chester County are, we haven't run the schedule completely on that, but if they're here, I don't think you'll have much of a funding allocation to print there.
Very good. Thanks.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm seeking your approval to give two conditional offers of employment to the next two candidates on our civil service list for police officer. The reason I'm asking for two is because we're currently funded for 46 police officers, and we're at 45. And then in September, we will lose another officer to retirement. There is currently an academy class that starts July 8th. If we don't get a candidate into that academy class, we'll be stuck till January of 2020. It's important that we keep up with the hiring of police officers as they leave, because in December of this year, we leave three more to retirement. So we have a potential at the end of 2019 to be down five police officers, which could, would be very hard for us to keep up with what we're currently doing, and what's, since I currently started last week. So I just, I'm not asking for additional officers, just to replace officers that are leaving.
Any other who would need, like, do you have a Spanish? Minority?
It's all civil service. We have a current civil service list. We don't control who we hire. It goes through a process, and then the Civil Service Commission gives us the list, and we go in order, one, two, three, four, and so on.
Do you find that there's, are there not a lot of minorities in the system, or, because I do also get a lot of requests about, you know, the community just don't feel that they're being represented?
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, in the police force.
We don't get a lot of minorities that actually take the test, but right now, minorities are highly sought in the police force, and they tend to go to police departments that unfortunately play more, pay more money and actually do a little bit less work than we do here in Pottstown. So they're highly sought after, especially Latinos that speak Spanish. They're highly sought after, police officers right now.
So basically, through your process, you pretty much just go who's next in line?
Yeah.
Is that pretty much the way?
It starts off with a written exam, physical agility exam, interviews, a background investigation, and then once you get a conditional offer of employment, you take a polygraph, a physical agility test, and a psychological test.
Everybody, because it's the only town, we don't have Latino, and we know any presentals that have Latino minority in there.
Yes.
But it gets to me.
We did, not long ago, we had a black officer, Officer Stephen Dice, and he spoke Spanish. He now works in Upper Providence Township.
Okay. All right, so we will list this for Monday evening, and I urge you and all councilors to approve it. All right, 13, another presentation for the airport open house.
I just wanted to come as far to everybody and ask for permission for this year, August 24th and 25th for our open house. We're going to do rides again, helicopter, balloon, airplane, kind of invite the community out. I want to try to do something different. I want to try to see if I can invite some of the local, like, restaurants, food wagons, things like that, and kind of have that out in the parking lot. I don't want to call it the Taste of Pottstown, but something similar like that. But, so it's free admission, $20 for an airplane ride and lunch, so it's a good deal, so, kind of, for permission or all that.
So the 24th and 25th, uh, morning?
Yes.
What are the times?
Starts at 10 and goes until 3, but whoever's there will take care of it.
Is there any alcohol at the event?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't.
I just wanted to know, because we need to approve that, if so.
Some airports have, like, wine and beer, and then, I kind of feel, I don't want to call it bad taste, but I don't think the two should kind of coexist the other. But we will be trying to work with FlyFox also, and see if they want to come out and support it also.
Okay.
Real simple, sorry. Any questions?
No. Just require any action.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll list this for Monday evening. 14, Attorney Stephen Ross, 192 South Hannover Street.
Yeah, I guess you can. Yeah.
Good evening, Council, I'm Tom Burley. I work for Hannover Square Commercial. And I wanted to come here tonight and place Stephen Ross. Unfortunately, he had to attend a hearing in Florida, so he had to catch a flight this afternoon to Florida. I do have one of his partners, Joseph Quinn, with me, who I'm going to have speak as well. As you, as some of you guys recall, I was here in February to request some changes to the facade of the building. We had agreed to a color scheme that we executed on one side of the building. Once we got that facade up, Mr. Ross and his partners were a little less thrilled about the way that the scheme looked. Once it was, it looks good on paper, but once it was added, they didn't see how it looked. What we would like to do is request a small change by eliminating one of the, so there was some, the original is the version with the two stripes that go across the building. The proposed is having a green on the first floor the whole way around the building, or I mean, I'm sorry, on the three sides with the AZEC trim, and then a khaki almond color on the top portion of the building. So we would like to request a change for that, and just wanted to get Council's support on that. Mr. Quinn would like to say a few comments?
Thank you. So we, we're supposed to take possession of the building in approximately two weeks, as we're working through the last details. We're not asking for any structural changes of any kind. The current facade does kind of look more like rugby stripes, if you can imagine that. It's green, beige, green and beige, and it's a little busy, and it's generally a conservative business, since it's a law firm, and it just looks a little busy on the outside. So we're just asking for a minor change. We do like the dark, very dark green color that was approved, and we're just asking that these, the upper portion of the building is just a solid beige. That'll, that'll kind of tone it down a bit, but same color scheme, just a little bit different pattern.
So just to, just to clarify, you're proposing that for the side that you, the north side that you painted, it would be in this color scheme that you're proposing?
The proposal that's being held up here at the moment would be around the three of the sides.
Okay.
And they would all match. So the side that's painted now that's facing South Street.
Right.
That would be corrected.
Okay.
And also have the beige fully above the first floor, which is all, which is going to be all green. Actually, it's green.
Okay, understood.
And I think everybody remembers this from February. This was a condition of approval of the prior project known as Hannover Commercial, and there was approvals given as recent as February, and this would require Council vote to alter what was approved in February.
We encourage, if you want to go out and look at it, the side facing South Street, the north side of the building, is currently painted in the original color scheme.
Okay, there's no more comment. We'll list it for Monday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fixed base operations, lease agreement with Fly Elite.
Yeah, so we've been working with the fixed base operator to review new terms of a lease. We've, we have a draft that we've, that we've forwarded to the FBO. The general outline of this lease is that it would be for a period of five years. The highlights include a 5% per year escalation, increase in fuel flowage fee paid by the borough, to the borough, of an additional 5 cents in 2021, and then an additional 5 cents in 2022. The biggest change would allow the FBO to earn rent credits for performing services currently paid for by the borough, such as lawn care, fuel farm maintenance, snow removal, and general upkeep of the terminal building. And as I mentioned, you know, the draft is sent to the FBO for their review, and assuming they're okay with the terms, they would, they would sign it, and we would present it to Council for their approval as the next step. So the lease addendum, as it is now, is attached to the agenda for your review.
Okay. Okay, you've all gotten a copy of that. My question is, how have they been performing?
Well, I mean, it seems like the activity, the flight activity has been up in general. You know, the fuel sales, I think, are slightly up as well. You know, I, in general, I haven't really heard any, too many complaints, really.
Okay, just asking. All right, we'll list this for Monday.
That would be provided, they are, they are accepting of the terms.
Right.
That we would list it on Monday. If not, we would continue to discuss that.
Yeah, we have time, yeah. 16, Delta Airport Consultants Agreement Extension.
Yeah, so this is our agreement for the airport engineer. Essentially, the base agreement was for three years with two one-year extensions. We're requesting that Council authorize the first of the one-year extensions. If you recall, we issued RFP for these services, and Delta was, you know, overwhelmingly determined to be the most qualified consultant. And we've had, I mean, just from staff, working with them, I know what, they worked with the FBO as well, they worked with a lot of other airports throughout Pennsylvania and throughout the mid-Atlantic region, and they've been nothing but professional, and, you know, very thorough. We like that the, our engineer, contact Dave Jones, is actually a pilot himself. We think that brings a very unique perspective, being both an engineer and a pilot. And quite frankly, they've gotten us, they've written a lot of grants, and they've gotten us a lot of money for the airport over the past five years.
So you recommend it?
I would recommend we do it.
Very good. If there are no questions, we'll list that for Monday. And 17, our fire chief slash fire marshal appointment.
Now...
Yeah, per, per the Borough Ordinance, Council does need to, uh, formally, um, appoint, uh, the, the Fire Marshal/Fire Chief, uh, position. So, uh, we would ask for your approval on Monday night.
Very good. All right, we'll list that for Monday. Eighteen is Resolution, the PennDOT slash King and Manatoni Street.
So this is a, uh, a resolution essentially, uh, for Council to acknowledge that the borough would be willing to take responsibility of the, uh, traffic signals once they are installed and completed as a part of the King Street Bridge, uh, replacement, uh, that is going to be conducted by PennDOT. So this is fairly typical. I mean, it's no different than the, any of the other traffic light signals that, uh, we maintain in the borough that PennDOT has installed.
Okay, and we'll list that for Monday. Nineteen is Resolution, the DCED Flood Mitigation Grant.
Yeah, so this was the, uh, grant source that I mentioned earlier to help us address the, um, underground stormwater, uh, arches. And, um, this, this, uh, this grant, uh, we've been, um, also working with the, the DEP as well. And, um, they, they actually kind of recommended that we apply for this grant, so it sounds like they're going to be supportive of this application. And we are, we're able to verify that this, this funding can be used on, um, private part, uh, property. The maximum amount that we can apply for is $500,000. Um, that's going to help us a, a little bit. We'll still have, uh, a lot further to go if we really want to address, uh, all, all these situations. But it is, it would be a good start if we could get this funding. Um, so we are proposing that, uh, Council approves this resolution to apply for a grant in the amount of $500,000. The match requirement for the borough is fifteen percent, which would equate to $75,000 of commitment by the borough.
Okay, well, list this for approval for Monday evening. Memorial Park, Phase Three Bid Award.
Yeah, so if Council recalls, the original bid for this project, which we rejected, came in about $100,000 over budget.
Right.
So since then, um, we asked staff and our, and Cedarville Engineering to, you know, rethink the project and try to right-size it so that we can get a bid that was closer to the funding amount that we had. So, uh, we did end up, uh, rebidding the project and, um, you know, now the low bidder is coming in much closer, uh, to the actual, uh, funding that we have from the grant. So, um, we're still over, but we're only, uh, over by about $10,000. That's not an exact figure, but it, it's pretty close.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, there is an additional, um, uh, four, three to $4,000, I believe, for the, for the engineering work to actually rebid the project. So, um, you know, at the end of the day, I think, you know, we still made out better. We're still going to get the essential improvements that we, that we need there at the park. And we would recommend awarding this to the lowest qualified bidder on Monday night.
Okay. Everyone understand? Any questions? Okay, we'll list it for Monday. Twenty nineteen, the paving bid award. And we have that.
Yeah, so if, yeah, the paving bid award is at your, at your places. Um, uh, we did have a, uh, low bidder, um, Suter, who actually completed our paving work for the last several, um, bids that we put out. Uh, we're, we've been happy, uh, with their work in general. Um, uh, inter- interestingly enough, we estimated that, uh, this work was going to, uh, cost us about $875,000, but the bids, uh, came in at $772,000. Um, again, this isn't, just to reiterate, this is not something that the, that the borough pays for. This is paid for through our state liquid fuels funding. So if you recall the presentation that Counselor Culp and I, uh, prepared for Council, um, this is that, I believe, 4.1 miles of paving. This is, this is, uh, the funding from the state that would pay for that and the resulting bid that we're recommending you award.
Okay. No questions, we'll list this for approval Monday evening. Uh, twenty-two, outdoor dining ordinance update.
If Council recalls, I guess it was a couple of months ago, we, uh, updated the ordinance to allow outdoor dining. It included some modification to the downtown zoning ordinance as well. Um, looking through the ordinance, uh, we feel there should be some minor updates and tweaking to that to make it exactly what we intended. Uh, with your permission, we'd ask that we move forward with making those changes. We'll actually have the text of those changes, which are very minor, for next month. Public hearing the following month to adopt, so we'll be back right on schedule. So, uh, we'd ask for authorization to move forward with allowing us to make those changes.
Okay, and we'll list that for Monday. Land Bank Consulting Service.
So in order to, um, see that the, that the land bank gets set up, uh, and gets working so that it can, uh, eventually, uh, start to transfer, uh, properties that we can reap the economic development benefits that a land bank has to offer, um, the land bank is, uh, recommending that, um, a consultant be, uh, continued. If you recall, we brought in Branton Strategies, which is really the, you know, uh, preeminent, um, land bank consultant for the state of Pennsylvania. They, uh, Winnie Branton is, uh, the partner there, um, principal there, I should say, who is, uh, really leading this charge, uh, really knows her stuff. And, um, right now, um, the way that the land bank is funded is through the property transfers. So until, um, the property transfers occur and they start getting 50% of the tax revenue for five years on those properties, um, they're, they're at, they're looking to the borough to help get them set up and get them up and running. Um, so I believe the first, uh, um, contract was for, uh, $8,000, which she helped develop the policies and, and, um, procedures, the zoning ordinance, um, and some of the other, uh, ins and outs that are required legally to set up a land bank. So she's proposing to continue, um, these services at, at an hourly rate of $150 an hour, which, uh, I believe was the same rate that she had provided before. Really, the land bank, um, would be using these services on a limited, as-needed basis. And, um, I would be monitoring the time that she's spending and the cost that would be, uh, incurred for that.
Okay, so we can move on that Monday?
Yep, so we're asking for Council's approval Monday.
If there are no questions, we'll list that for Monday. And the Soapbox Derby, June fifteenth, 2019.
Yeah, so the, the AmBucks is, uh, requesting, uh, the closure of Wilson Street Friday morning, June fourteenth at 7:00 AM to prepare the road surface and set up the track. Uh, they're going to hold some trial runs on Friday afternoon and then Saturday, they'll start at eight, eight PM, um, concluding at, at 6:00 PM. Um, so they're, they would request the road closure on those two days. If there is a, um, severe weather, in which they would cancel Saturday's activities, the rain date would be Sunday, June sixteenth, I assume, at the same, um, time.
Very good. All right, we'll list that for Monday. Twenty-five is the Pottstown Rumble Beer Garden.
Yeah, so the Rumble, again, is, uh, requesting a, a beer garden. The beer garden will operate from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM on June twenty-first through twenty-third. Um, and, uh, e- essentially, the consumption area will be limited to large canopy structure at the, at the main court. Um, monitors will be placed at the, in the area to ensure that alcoholic beverages do not travel beyond the confines of the designated area. Um, and they will be, um, checking IDs, uh, as required as people are, are entering that, that location.
Very good. List that one for Monday. Under Harb, we have, uh, to approve sixty-four King Street and also nine sixty-four to nine sixty-six High Street. Do that. Administratively approved is eight eighty-six High Street. We'll list that. Under Board Vacancies, the land back, we're seeking two.
Correct.
Okay. Do that Monday.
Yeah, just to clarify, um, there was one resignation on the land bank board. Um, and then, uh, the, the second one is a term that will expire in June. And, um, uh, I believe, um, that the second one is seeking reappointment.
Okay. Very good. All right. It's time for its comments from the citizens present. You will each be given three minutes to comment to Council.
Um, Black Lab Rentals, I believe they signed in probably for the conditional use hearing. From, um, so, uh, Randy Memms, please come forward.
Evening.
Justice?
Yeah. I want to look at some notes I made on my phone while I was sitting here, so I make sure I remember to tell you guys everything I want to say. So, uh, I recently, uh, had bought a property at Montgomery County, uh, tax sale, Tax Claim Bureau sale. So, uh, I have a problem right now because I can't get a transfer of ownership inspection done because they want me to pay all the previously owed fees and taxes and everything else that were owed on it. Unfortunately, I don't know if you guys are familiar with how it works with these sales, but the money that's paid in, from the winning bidder, which is already paid, uh, to the county. The county then, at some time point in the future, six to 12 months down the road, puts before the, a judge to sign off on a distribution, uh, of the actual, uh, money that is taken from the sale. So, uh, that distribution hasn't been made yet. And because of that, uh, I've talked with the, uh, borough manager, I guess, and Justin, I forget his name. Anyway, you guys probably know it. Uh, oh, okay, Justin, I talked with you. Nice meeting you finally. So, uh, and, uh, he said that due to different rules like Act Ninety and some other stuff, uh, that, uh, I can't get this, this inspection done. And because I can't get this transfer of ownership inspection done, I also can't get permits to fix the place. So, uh, I'm basically stuck in the water and I need to work on my place sooner rather than later instead of letting it sit. And so I want to see if I can get some sort of conditional approval from the board maybe here, or Council, whatever, and, uh, see if I can somehow get permits and get these inspections and move forward with the understanding that the county is going to pay the past due fees from the money that I bought the property with in the, sometime in the near future. So I've spoken with the Tax Claim Bureau, uh, chief about it and, uh, and, uh, he was supposed to be in touch, I think, with Justin and maybe the, the, uh, other borough managers and stuff about it. So I'm not sure what's been done so far, but they were trying to work on it. So that's one piece of it. Uh, the other piece I was going to ask is, uh, basically, uh, the condition of the property is a shell. So, uh, there's no ability to have any running water or wastewater or anything like that. Uh, and it's been like this for many years. Uh, the previous owners before I bought the property, uh, they did nothing to it and they bought it as from a, a bank repo, uh, sale. Uh, the bank had repossessed it and, for, due to a mortgage foreclosure action and so, uh, but they just let it sit because the partners had some sort of argument between themselves and did nothing with it. So meantime, the county, and, well, I'm sorry, the borough, uh, continue to charge, uh, fees, is my understanding. Uh, landlord and rental fees and, uh, also the utility fees, the water, sewer, and trash fees for a building that could never have, uh, ever been rented or, or used in any way anyway. Because there's, right now, there's no water supply pipes in there. All the wastewater lines are, have big gouges on it, in them like this. Uh, so they could never be used whatsoever and it's been vacant all this time, for years. And now they're also charging me these fees and I can't do anything with the place anyway. And again, it can't be, uh, used regardless. So I feel that if I, if I were subjected to have to pay these fees for the previous people that never could use it and myself, I believe that the borough would be then being unjustly enriched.
Okay, you, uh, you've exceeded your time.
Okay. There was, there was one more thing.
I only have one question.
Yep.
Did you thoroughly check out this property before you bought it?
Yes, but...
Okay.
Again, you can only look into it that, so much.
Okay.
There was, there was one other piece about the trees I wanted to say.
No, you've exceeded your time.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
Okay.
But I, I would ask you to continue talking with the borough staff.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was the only one.
That concludes the comments from citizens present.
Okay, uh, we are at Counselor's comments. Counselor Lebedinsky. Counselor Prostle.
Oh, just to thank our Assistant District Attorney, uh, like with, uh, Richard Bradbury and Lauren and Evan did a great job at Rock the Block. And, and of course, uh, Chief Markovich for hosting the, the community meeting, which we'll hope to have more, maybe in smaller groups.
Good, Counselor Kirkland. Counselor Paez.
I think, uh, the three minutes is good, but when people have something else to do, they should allow a little, two more minutes. That would be more...
Especially with what happened, uh, to talk.
Not, not, give it a time to not exceed, but, uh, be more sensitive.
Counselor Trindee, uh, Binsy.
Okay, say the best of the last. Oh, I got three minutes, okay. Um, so I read to the kids at Rupert Elementary School, um, to the first graders. That was exciting. I bought two books and I donated it to the class. I went to the Hill School, they had the investors conference and Chief and Justin did an awesome job with it. But Peggy, she did a really good job when this one, um, investor was sent, I had a comment on, um, how contractors were saying negatively about investing in Pottstown and Peggy Lee shut her down, just saying. So it was really good, so I, I thought that was, but she informed, you know, gave her some information about it and talked to her about it off the scene. But just to let you know, we're not having no negativity in Pottstown. I was at Rock the Block, that was nice. I saw, um, Ryan, um, speak at Rock the Block. So, um, that was nice. It was a little cold and wet and people stop dropping your cigarette butts out there on the curbs because I was picking at it. It was a lot. Um, Edgewood Cemetery, I was there, I did, um, I, I went there, that was the same day. I agree with the mayor, it was a lot happening on the same day. Um, Connections on High Street, I was there, um, doing that, seeing the mayor there and also, um, um, Counselor Kirkland. It was really good. We had a little round table and we talked about, um, things that we want to see happening in Pottstown. And, um, it was really good. I, I went to two of those sessions and, um, it was a good turnout for that. Uh, Go Forth, um, I'm on the board of that now. So, um, they asked me to be on the board and I was on, uh, they had a meeting yesterday, um, of things. They, they still doing fundraising, they do fundraising at the retinas here in Pottstown. Um, I also attended the train idea, the trackless train with Joe and Dr. Peter Newman. Um, that was interesting, I liked that. I met with, we had a meeting with the commissioners on the new voting, um, thing. So don't forget the primaries on May twenty-first, I hope to see you guys out there. Um, there's new voting booths, so you have to grid them in like you did back in school. You know how you did the little circles with the pencil? That's what you have to do now. So, um, did that. And I was at the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Schuylkill, um, Trail. Justin was there, did that. The, and of course, the mural for the Schuylkill, um, Trail too, did the painting, the Eco Fast, Spark for Life, Pine Forge Academy, went there, that was really nice, had a good time, um, there. The kids sung and they were singing and they were harmonizing, made me cry and I don't know why I cried, but I'm so emotional now, but I don't know why. Oh, sorry, okay, I'm almost done. Okay, Town Hall meeting with, um, the chief, he did an awesome job. Kudos to you, you did good with that. Um, I went to the Potts Grove Manor, Colonial Mayfair, um, New Stell... I went to the Potts Grove Manor, Colonial Mayfair, New Stells, Maribel. Yes, Maribel, thank you. Memorial Bridge with the mayor. She was there. And Rita. The library charity. I don't even know, I bid on a chair. I don't know if I got it yet. I was hoping Deb was here to bring my chair, but I guess I didn't win. I did a power meeting that's for funding, fair funding for Pottstown School District. We are going to Harrisburg June 12th. So I hope everybody here can come. And the Mobile Park, Justin already talked about that. And there's teachers appreciation. I just want to shout out to all the teachers in Pottstown. I appreciate you. I wish I had an apple for you guys, but here's your apple. Thank you for all you do. And let's see, oh, and I'm in the Memorial Day Parade. I'm going to be in there with my mango charger. We're going to be waving. I probably have my grandbaby, you know, we'll have to do that. And I, oh, and there is dog law enforcement. Going to be canvassing and hitting up random Montgomery County of, houses. Make sure everybody's licensed. Make sure the dogs are legit. And if you have any questions, you can always contact Megan Horse at 717-418-0284. I think I'm done.
Very good. You've been busy. You're competing with our mayor.
I'm telling you, I'm going to have to take that.
Mayor Henrik, anything?
All I have to say is goats, chickens, and cop cars. That's what I'm going to be working on while I'm recuperating. And no, I'm not coming back with a new nose, unfortunately. But Justin, I'm going to get you the name of the woman who was at the Eco Fest. And they rent out goats to municipalities to take care of the grass and poison ivy problems. So she's willing to let us borrow some. And there, I also looked into, there's fences that can be moved. There are electronic fences, electric fences. And Trinie is going to watch the goats. Is that what you're telling me? That's the plan. So we can, there is a way to put them in little areas around Edgewood Cemetery and the airport. I don't know. That may be a liability at the airport, but.
May I borrow them from where you are?
Yes, you can.
We're only going to have one goat?
No, we are.
Several?
Ask Justin.
Oh, ask Justin, okay.
And we're going to be working on trading cards for our police officers that I guess we used to do back before I was here. And so we can improve community relations. And we have a lot of stuff going on. So get moving, get shaking, get your hands involved in Pottstown and help out. Because we're making waves, right?
Very good. I agree. Meeting adjourned.
Answering this, this parade on July 4th, 2019, no rain date. They will assemble at 9:30 a.m., start at 10:50 a.m. and terminate at 11:30. They will assemble on High Street at Madison and Adams. And they will travel on Adams Street, on High, on High Street from Adams Street to Manatoni, I'm sorry. Six floats, two vans, six vehicles.
Are one of those floats for the mayor? Will she have her own float? If so, I want to be on it with her.
I ride, I walk with a big duck.
I don't know about that. We'll talk. Your people get with my people.
You could put a, a pool on a flatbed and she could be on a float in the pool.